Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the East Bridgewater Planning Board for Monday evening, June 17. We have actually a full group tonight, which is good. We have regular members Diane Phillips, Rachel Tedesco, John Lawler, Roy Gardner, Dwayne Crosby, and Miles Heager, myself Kevin Riley, and we also have associate member Yvonne McCray present and available for votes as need be tonight. First item on the agenda tonight, as is tradition, immediately after the town elections, is the reorganization of the board. The election of a chairman, a vice chairman, and clerk for the upcoming year until the next election. So at this time, the chair would entertain a motion with regard to nomination of a chairman for the upcoming board year.
I move that we nominate Kevin Riley to be the chairman of the planning board.
I'll second it.
I'll third it.
Because I don't want to do it.
Motion is made and seconded to allow you us truly to continue in the role of chairman for another year. Are there other nominations?
Beautiful thing.
Hearing none. All those in favor of my reappointment, basically, to position of chairman for the current, excuse me, coming year, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Record will reflect the unanimous vote of all members present and voting.
No, I can't vote twice.
Unfortunately not. At this point, chair would entertain a motion with respect to the appointment of a vice chair for the coming board year. Chair would move the appointment of Mr. Gardner as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion on that motion. Other nominations for the position of vice chair? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Again, unanimous vote of those present and voting. And finally, we have the position of clerk for the upcoming year. Chair would entertain a motion with respect to the appointment of a clerk.
I'd like to recommend Rachel Tedesco as clerk.
I'll second that.
Motion is made to appoint Rachel Tedesco as clerk of the board for the coming year. That motion is seconded by Mr. Lawler.
Yes.
Discussion on that motion. Further nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. That motion is carried as well. So Mrs. Tedesco is appointed as clerk of the board for the coming year.
Congratulations.
All right. That being done, we then have a Form A application for the property at 35 and 45 Winter Street. Basically, if you've had an opportunity to look at that, and I believe Roy has it up on the board, this is essentially a land swap between neighbors at 35 and 45 Winter Street to resolve the matter of a concrete pool deck encroachment. So essentially, they are swapping parcels of, I believe it's 1,020 square feet each. Chair has looked at the plan, and it appears that everything there is in order. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Charlie Woodwood. I work for Professional Land Survey Associates. And I'm here representing the two families concerned, Jennifer Huska and Mrs. Solomon and Mrs... So exactly what you're saying is what's going on. During the survey, we noticed the encroachment of the pool deck. So what they've done is the two parties have gotten together, and they're going to make an even swap of the property. Over in the middle, left-hand side of the page, there's a note that reads... Okay, the intent of this plan is to show the redivision of the property lines for 35 Winter Street and for 45 Winter Street. The frontage of both existing lots is to remain the same along Winter Street. The total area for number 35 Winter Street is to remain the same. The overall area for the two adjoining lots for 45 Winter Street is to remain the same. Okay? So basically, what we're doing is swapping the two pieces that are being encroached upon and just making the lots whole again as they are today, because need a lot meets owning today, obviously.
Questions, comments?
Okay, just a couple more clarifications there. As I normally do when we receive a plan application, I verify the signatures, listed owners.
Uh huh.
There was a bit of a problem in the assessor's office. Since the assessor's office still lists that back piece, actually, if you look at where this cursor is, the assessor's office has a line coming down here and says the other abutto owns this half where that land was coming from. I did a deed trace. That's clearly incorrect.
Right.
So the assessor's office said they're going to fix that. That back piece that's labeled Passa Lay 35,000 square feet clearly is owned by the same owner that owns 127 Apostle 26.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
I don't know where that error came from, but the records at the registered deeds are pretty clear.
Yeah, we've actually, on the left-hand side of the paper, we've actually listed all of the deeds and the books and pages and the dates of the deeds, because we found the same thing. It's the assessors have that incorrect.
So the only problem we have is technically speaking, the applications, we're supposed to be using the most current records in the assessor's office. So I think maybe by today, they've already fixed it, hopefully.
Thank you.
But in any case, that's, this is a fairly simple case here. The frontages don't change, the effective areas of the lot don't change. Those homes were built back when the required square footage was 22,000 square feet, and the frontage was, was it 110?
110, I think.
Yes, 110. So we're just swapping those two hashed parcels between the two abutters. So very simple, clean Form A plan.
For a change, huh?
Sure enough. So that's all I have to let anybody else if they've got any questions.
Other comments or questions? If not, chair would entertain a motion to authorize endorsement of the Form A plan for 35 and 45 Winter Street.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Lawler, seconded by Mr. Heager. Further discussion? None. All those in favor so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Unanimous vote of all regular members present and voting.
Thank you very much.
Sir.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Roy, for your help.
Have a good night.
You take care. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
That plan will be in the office signed in the morning, Charlie.
Thank you very much for your help.
Here we have the chappies here, so we need to copy it anyway, so.
Okay, let me just, we've got a couple of minutes before our continued public hearing. Let me jump down to the matter with respect to several of the special engineering accounts that we have. At this point, there are those with respect to 126 to 130 Franklin Street, and then also for Madeira's Court. And I believe we have two, excuse me, we have two for 126, 130 Franklin Street, and one for Madeira's Court. So the amounts that are involved for 126, 130 Franklin Street, the town is holding $1,002.19. The second account is $1,052.73. For Madeira's Court, it's $1,159.84. I am not particularly aware of Madeira's Court, Roy, but I think Franklin Street is certainly eligible for release at this point.
Yeah, I think we can actually vote to release all of those funds with the caveat that we need to confirm that those funds are planning board funds and not conservation commission funds.
Take that as a motion from Mr. Gardner to release the three special engineering, the funds in the three special engineering accounts, those being E202, E207, E208. In the amounts previously stated, with the caveat that it be determined that those are indeed planning board related funds and not Concom funds. So a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Lawler. Further discussion? Gentlemen, anything? Yvonne? Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Record will reflect unanimous vote of all members present and voting. Just circulate this for signature by the board members. That will authorize the release. To the town treasurer. All right, it being 7:15, we do have a continued public hearing with respect to a modification of special permit for 211 Highland Street. This matter has been before the board last two weeks ago. It was continued to this evening for some additional information with regard to truck movements onto Route 18. We have Attorney Pellegrini here, along with our engineer, and we would... Rob, if you have any comments that you'd like to make at this point, or if not, we'll just open to the board. I do note that some additional information was submitted to the board with regard to the turning radius and such, so.
I don't have much more to add. I'm just hoping for a vote tonight on this. I think you can see there was a modified curb there to make it work as well as we could possibly make it work. If you have any questions, the engineer that handled it is right next to me, and I'll leave it at that.
Ladies, comments, questions on the left here?
We did discuss it last, our last meeting about changing that, yeah, about widening that.
None, any?
No.
Okay. Roy?
I don't have any questions, no.
Okay. Gentlemen?
Yvonne?
All right.
I think at this time, I'm going to make a motion that we continue action on this matter until such time as the applicant has received a revised permit from Mass Highway to modify that curb cut, since the majority of that curb cut expansion is actually in the layout of Route 18, which we legally don't have a right to touch.
Yeah.
Additionally, I'd like to make sure that Mass Highway has an opportunity to do their own due diligence on that accessway, given that the current Mass Highway permit has restrictions on it similar to the restrictions that we have on our permit. I think their permit has high priority than ours under state law, so, again, a motion is to continue this action until such time as we've received a modified permit from Mass Highway for this application.
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Just the motion, the motion that's made by Mr. Gardner is to continue the matter pending receipt from Mass Highway of an approval of the revised curb cut. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Tedesco.
So we understand that we need to revise our Mass DOT access permit. As part of the application, they request local approvals in order to do so, so they will be looking for the modified condition in order to review our application. We understand that we cannot make any modifications until we get our revised access permit, but this is step one before we can apply for that modified access permit. Otherwise, we're going to be in limbo. They request the local approvals as part of that application.
Interesting.
So I'll add a minor modification to my motion, and that is that if Mass Highway needs us to further comment on this, they're free to contact us as part of their application.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I've never had a scenario where DOT will contact the town. They're looking for the applicant, it's the applicant's responsibility to provide all of the materials. They're not going to reach out to the town on behalf of our application.
Well, they've already done that in the last time we dealt with them. On the Compass Medical curb cut, where they required widening of Route 18 and adding a lane, they did that first, before they came to us for final approval. And Mass Highway did talk to us.
So would you...
So your comment is incorrect.
Okay.
The very last time we dealt with them, that's exactly what they did. The initial preliminary plan for Compass Medical showed widening of Route 18 in front of the building. They went to Mass Highway first for authorization for that curb cut and the widening of the road, before we held a hearing and approved it. So we had not approved it prior to Mass Highway doing that.
Would you consider a condition of approval that we revise the access permit, or else this is null and void? I guess...
No.
So you're going to make, so...
No.
What if we can't get the approval from DOT? I'm sorry, what if we do get the approval from DOT?
They're free to talk to us.
And we come back to you, and then you decide you don't want to approve this?
I can't speak for seven members of the board who are going to be voting on that.
It's a lot of time and money wasted on the, like, if you're not interested in this, then let's just deny this now, rather than having the applicant spend months...
Is that your preference? We just deny it now?
I think she's asking a vote, chair. She's asking for a vote. That's what she's asking for.
We've already been here six times. I just, if you're not interested in this, then let's move on rather than waste time and money. If you're willing to consider this, then let's consider it, but if you're not, I just feels like we've done everything that you've asked, and we respectfully ask that you vote.
All right, well, there's a motion on the floor.
All right, I'll withdraw the motion at this time.
Motion has been withdrawn by Mr. Gardner.
I'll make a motion that we deny the application to revise the curb cut on Route 18 North Bedford Street for the 211 Highland Street project.
So Mr. Gardner makes a motion to deny, well, the request, the request was for...
To modify the existing special permit.
To modify the particular condition of the existing special permit, and you're making the motion to deny that request.
Yes.
Okay. So that's the motion. Is there a second to that motion? Chair will second the motion. Further discussion on the motion? This is a motion to deny the request for modification of the special permit.
I just had a question. Why we can't approve it dependent upon...
Conditions.
A condition that the state approve it? I mean, is there some way to do that?
Chair would say that there's a motion on the floor. You're free to vote on the motion as you wish. If the motion fails, you make another motion.
I think the problem we have here is you've got traffic on Route 18 going 45 miles an hour. Southbound traffic going 45 miles an hour, taking a right turn into there, is going to be moving at a fairly high speed. The revised curb cuts still show that a tractor-trailer has to enter the incoming lane to make that radius without crossing over into the south, northbound lane of Route 18. If you are in a passenger vehicle and you take a right turn into there, and you're looking, and you're going 25 miles an hour, and you're looking at the front end of a tractor-trailer in your lane, you have a bit of a problem.
I see, okay. And this is not at the traffic light? This is at...
This is at the entrance to 798, which is shared with 211 Highland.
It's not a street so much as a driveway?
Well, it's an entrance to, in industrial development. Yes, that's correct. It's not a street.
So my comment...
We're not going to, we're not going to plant up the traffic.
My comment here is, Matt's not here, I think, to maybe answer directly, but, you know, I share the concern because it's the great unknown. I mean, you have a restriction of 25 trucks right now. 25 could become 40, 25 could become 140. I don't know that, because we don't have a tenant there. You know, and I, one of the reasons, and shame on me, I mean, this is not something, I'll say shame on me because I, you know, was the one who sort of crafted the motion last time around, that was never a consideration. The consideration was just raw numbers of trucks entering that, the road from there, not whether the trucks could make the turn or not. Now, you've, you know, we've got another concern here, and the, you know, the stated reason for your application seems to be that, you know, there's problems with internal truck movement, you know, between the, sort of, the parking area and the loading area, okay? You know, that's a tough question, whether you remedy that, and by doing that, you create a different problem, and perhaps a more serious problem by way of this access point onto Route 18 and the movements that are involved at that intersection, would be involved at that intersection. So that's my point. Further discussion?
I guess my question is, how is this affecting your tenant, potential tenants right now? Is it something that's going to prolong the process? Because I feel like if it's something that's going to delay business coming into town, I have a problem with it, but, you know, I'd be open to hear your point of view.
I think that's a question that I asked, I think, the meeting before, perhaps you were here.
Okay.
You were elected, and sort of the answer that I got, the question that I asked directly was how many tenants have been unwilling to rent because of this condition?
Okay.
And I think the answer that I got from the property owner was that there were none directly, but that it had come up in basically every single discussion that they had had with tenants.
That's accurate?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Is there any daylight anywhere to, because, I mean, you know, life is all about who answers the phone for you, and I've been in the predicament with the state as well, where I've got somebody that will jump up to help me and somebody else that gives me the long arm, so is there any way we could, we could come to a happy medium, some kind of an agreement?
I think we did that in the first motion, and they requested that we vote yes or no.
Kind of either/or.
It would not surprise me that Mass Highway would want to see a third lane there, a turning lane.
Yeah, I agree.
Because on all commercial properties along most of the main streets now, they're requiring that.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see their opinion on that before we vote. That's why I made the motion that I made.
I get it.
And I'm more than willing to withdraw the second motion and go back to the first one, which says we defer action until such time as Mass Highway has made a clear review of the current curb cut approval, and see, when we say that we basically want to put a significant amount of 53-foot tractor-trailer truck back into that intersection, what their requirement is going to be.
I see what you're talking about.
Yeah, I understood.
Because it would absolutely, based on what I'm seeing up and down Route 18, either a really wide radius...
Even.
Or a turning lane, especially at that location right by a traffic light.
I know you're trying, no.
Is there a reason why there could not be an additional lane that might have been discussed that I might have missed?
I don't think that came up during the initial permits. Roy, what's the harm in just approving it conditioned upon Mass Highway approval? Like, if they say no, then that's a denial, right?
Because I'd like to see what Mass Highway is going to require for that.
Okay, okay.
If they were to require a third lane there, that's a huge difference in that whole layout.
Can we include a condition that we will report back to the conclusions?
Final determination.
Our concern is that we're going to spend months working through this with Mass DOT because they are not expeditious, and then we're going to come back and you're still not going to be willing to modify this condition, and that would have then been a waste of significant time and money modifying our Mass DOT access permit. We're just looking to see if you're willing to work with us and move forward with this, or if you don't want to.
I think the idea of approving it prior to Mass Highway, saying what they want to see there, the answer to that's no.
Would have been nice to know that in January.
What about approving a condition upon it as it is, and if it's not, then we would have to reapply? I'm just, the client needs finality, and that would be finality. They would just have to start over.
So let's back up here.
Yeah.
Remember, it was only a year and a half to two years ago where the client sat there and said, "We know we can't use that for the big tractor-trailers," and they're the ones that proposed those restrictions, the client, the owner of the property.
Yeah.
It's a different owner.
They said they, I understand it's a different client, but the special permit was granted based on their testimony at that special permit hearing, that they recognized that that really can't be used for tractor-trailer traffic, because of the narrowness of the roadway, the tightness of the curves, the septic system for 798 being on that other curve. I mean, a septic system on 798 is right out on front on the, at the street there.
I thought the language came from one of the board members. I don't think it was really the applicant throwing out that idea.
My memories of the applicant was the one that gave us that information readily as part of their proposal.
I appreciate your willingness to talk to me at least about it. That's nice of you, but I don't remember it the same way.
I, you know, so I think we can go one of two ways.
Yeah.
I had an earlier motion. I think that's the most judicious way to do this, is to wait for Mass Highway to come back.
I don't think they will.
You're free to tell Mass Highway they can, they can contact us if they want to, if there's any questions.
So let me just ask another question. Assuming that the board turned this down, what happens to 798 and all the work that's been done there? Does that go away?
I'm going to withdraw the application, yeah, because there was...
You had said...
Yeah, from the beginning.
Just wanted to make sure that that was still the case.
Yeah.
All right, well, again, Mr. Gardner's motion that's been seconded is to deny this requested modification of the special permit issued for 211 Highland Street. Unless there's further discussion, chair would ask a vote on that matter. All those in favor of Mr. Gardner's motion to so deny so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Give some additional information.
And opposed?
No.
Mr. Heager in opposition, so that's a vote of six to one. Six regular members in favor of the motion, one opposed. So the motion obviously failed. The motion passes, and the request for special permit is denied. Special permit modification is denied. And at this point, chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing with respect to 211 Highland Street.
So moved.
Motion is made, Mr. Gardner, a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, there being no discussion. All those in favor of... All those in favor of closure, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Vote of all present in voting, respect to, the next matter on the agenda is the 798 Bed, North Bedford Street, special permit modification for that premises. Mr. Pellegrini?
On behalf of the applicant, I'm withdrawing that application.
Motion is made. Mr. Request is made to withdraw, is there a motion? Chair would entertain a motion to withdraw that application without prejudice.
I mean, I'd have a question to begin with, because that application also includes the correction of the parking and, and multiple other things, so...
Yeah, they'll have to, they'll have to make a separate application for that.
I don't see any reason why we can't vote to approve based on the modified plan we received just recently. Because that doesn't impact the other thing.
Vote to withdraw the application, and that's what I said from the beginning, that we're gonna do that.
Right, I did say, there was always one that was contingent. Because I'd like to get the parking.
Well, I'm confused here, because one of the things we, we required as part of the, the other special permit application within to modify the, the parking and, and correct all of the mistakes and, and problems that we had seen previously.
Well, the, the...
And that's not gonna change, changing that accessway isn't gonna change anything. We're gonna still require all of that stuff.
Yes.
I mean, let's, let's get, let me get the plan up.
Um, it's way at the top. Layout and materials.
Oh, that, that one, yeah, okay.
So, that one's ready to fly, pretty much?
These applications were submitted in tandem, and Attorney Pellegrini had always said that one is, was contingent upon the other.
Right.
So, the way these hearings were scheduled was that 211 Highland was always put ahead of 798 North Bedford, so as to allow for the fact or the possibility of, of the denial of 211, which would then presumably result in what the attorney has requested, the withdrawal of, of 798, so...
It's, it's a lot of interest to take the short route, take that one.
I can't...
Did I change your plans?
I can't change plans for the clients right now, this was the, this was what I was told from the beginning.
Sometimes things get out of sync.
I mean, yeah, certainly the board can do whatever they want, but there's an agreement between the two parties that certain work was gonna get done by certain parties, it's not gonna happen now, so you can do whatever you want, it's not gonna get built.
Not what I want, trying to work with you.
Yeah, I...
So, I won't.
I don't have authorization, I'm a fourth now.
Well, that's different than, you know...
Yeah, it's not working with me, it's, I'm just here to tell you what...
I'm just trying to pull out the best of the best, to, to try to, you know, put perfume on a pig.
Yeah, I'm sure this landowner can come back with, with their own plan, and I'm sure that's what they will do.
So be it.
Except this, this is their own plan, this is the 798. And it's got the parking changes that were required, which are gonna be required in any case, whether or not...
Right.
We modify that accessway.
Right, so it should be independent.
I don't think it's our business if, if the way this was being done is the modifications that are being put in by 798 were gonna be covered financially by someone else, they're gonna have to do those modifications anyway, irregardless of who pays for them. And whether or not the other special permit eventually gets granted. They have a whole new parking lot and a modification to the parking, which they're required to do based on the discussions we've been having as part of the 798 special permit hearings. I would expect they don't want to go back, file this again a second time, and send us that same plan. That borders on irrational. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the modified special permit plan for 798 North Bedford Street.
Motion is made by Mr. Gardner to approve the requested modification of the special permit for 798 North Bedford Street and the, incorporating the most recent iteration of the plan for that property. Mrs. Tedesco has seconded that motion, further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, Chair votes opposition. So, that's a vote of six against six to one, Chair being opposed. Chair at this time would entertain a motion to close the public hearing with respect to 798 North Bedford Street, that application having been granted.
I make the motion.
Motion is made by Mr. Lawler, seconded by Mr. Gardner. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And aye opposed, saying no. Motion is unanimously approved, that public hearing is closed.
Just, just for the public record, that plan that's up on the board right now is a plan that's marked as revision number four dated June 6, 2024.
June 6.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Hey, enjoy your summer.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the site plan approval for 516 North Bedford Street, 516 North Bedford Street. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Okay, so, we have an application which would allow the, basically the renovation of the second floor of the existing building to suit the needs of the Grace River Foursquare Church. It would become a meeting room, offices, and classrooms, is that correct?
It's not a classroom, it's more like a, a, other meeting room for youth.
Okay. So, plans have been presented, Mr. Gardner has pulled them up on the, on the board, and at this point, I would open it up to you folks, if you'd introduce yourselves, please, and then just go through and ask, tell us what it is you're looking to do, and see if we can help you out.
Yeah, my name's Willie, I'm a pastor of the church, my wife, she's a pastor.
My name's Blasia Marrera, I'm Willie's wife.
And we, we have a church in Bridgewater, that's our second location. We intend to do a church, a meeting space more for the, the younger generation over there, and also a pastor office, that's for me, and we'll be gathering probably around 50 people in that place.
Okay, so your maximum would be 50, you think?
Yes.
So... So, basically, according to the plan, there would be limited demolition, is that right? And just new, new construction to separate out the rooms and the offices and such, correct?
Yes, the building's pretty good condition, so just do very limited renovation.
Mr. Gardner, comments?
So, I, I don't really have any issues with this, as, as we should all know, this is a, a church. We're assuming it fits the, the legal status of a church in Massachusetts, basically without question, based on the letters I've seen. There's a little bit of confusion, because on, on, on one of the documents, and I'm not sure which one, it gives two totally different church names.
Oh, maybe because that's a denomination, Foursquare, and we at Grace River, we are the local part of the denomination.
All right, so that, that answers the only question I had in that.
And we do have an application that has been signed by both the applicant and the property owner, so we are, we're all set there. So, questions, ladies?
No, I think it's pretty clear from this drawing that this is your plans for that second floor. Does that make sense to you?
No question. Besides?
You said you have about 50 roughly parishioners at the church?
Actually, right now, we have around 20. We have made the, you know, future grow of tops 50.
Okay, and...
If we need more, we have to change locations.
So, so, I mean, I, I know the property pretty well, where it is on Route 18, and I believe most of the other businesses are closed...
Yes.
On Sunday, so the parking would be adamant, and, okay?
Yes, that's why we spoke with the owner, he said, all the businesses are pretty much closed during Sundays.
I have no further questions.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan as submitted.
I'll second it.
So, there's a motion made by Mr. Gardner and seconded by Mr. Lawler to approve the site plan as submitted, I'd like to have a date on that, but there is not a date on the plan as submitted on either of them. So, if you would be good enough to have the engineer just throw a date onto the plans and submit them as, you know, as printed, but just, you know, put a date in the date block there so that we'll have that. But we will, I will initial these, and so it will be to approve the site plan with the proposed renovations per the two plans that have been submitted and initial by the Chair this evening. That motion is made by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Lawler, further discussion, there being none, all those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Unanimous vote of all members present in voting. Thank you, that's the luck.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
653 Union?
653 Union Street, yes. That was here two weeks ago, a proposed one-lot subdivision, I do believe. And I see one of the focuses here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I've, I've looked this over and, and I did want to defer acting on that at our last meeting, because there were some questions I wanted to track through. At this time, I'm, I'd be happy to put a motion on the floor to approve the subdivision, the one-lot subdivision as shown on the, on the, on the currently submitted plans.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made to approve the proposed subdivision for property 653 Union Street, motion is by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mr. Heager. Further discussion? Roy, any, the usual conditions, any special conditions?
The usual conditions, the, the special condition, and I think it is, it is noted here on the, if I can, if I can find the note here. There is a note here on one of the plans hidden away, but, well, I'll just go through what the note is. The, the note basically says that the roadway that's being created as part of the subdivision plan must remain in, in common ownership with the house lot that's being created by this subdivision in perpetuity.
Okay, so, Mr. Gardner's motion is to approve the request, the application for subdivision at 653 Union, with the condition that, the standard conditions in our approval, as well as the special condition that the roadway as shown on the plan does remain in common ownership with the new lot being created. Further discussion on that motion.
And I'll just add that if the note is not on the plans, and, and I, I can't find the note on the plan, that before we actually endorse the plan, that note needs to be added to the plans.
You said you saw it on there before though, right?
I know it was in one of the documents that passed back and forth.
Yep.
I don't see it on the version of the plan that we have right now, but if, if it's on there, then fine.
Let's take a quick peek at what we have here. I thought originally it was up here in the notes, but I'm not seeing it.
The original plans that we sent in were for a, a state lot, too, that then was revised to a subdivision, so I don't know if it was on the estate lot plan that...
Yeah, it's not, it's not on anything that I'm seeing either, so...
It doesn't appear to be on there.
So, if we can just add that, that note, so that's, that's the motion with the, with the conditions as stated, and with the caveat that a new plan will be submitted with one condition regarding the common ownership of the street. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Unanimous vote of all regular members present in voting. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, so we have the matter of 374, 378, 388, Plymouth Street. That's, again, a subdivision that has been previously approved, plan has been endorsed.
And we don't have, actually have anything up here for that, but... All right, so what, what I, what I'd like to do here to, to, since we ended up with a significant delay by the applicant, because he had to change his plan from a Form A plan to a Form B plan, the plan has been approved, it's in the appeal period right now with the town clerk's office. Because next month we go into summer schedule, it'll be some extended period of time before we have an opportunity to vote on signing and releasing the covenant, doing a lot release as well as endorsing the plan. So, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to put a motion on the table that authorizes signing of those three documents after we received the certificate of no appeal being taken from the town clerk's office. So, we don't have to wait until the, the July meeting, which is almost a month away.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Gardner with respect to the execution of the plan, the covenant, and the lot release for 374, 378, and 388 Plymouth Street, contingent upon receipt of the certificate of no appeal from the town clerk, and Craig, I think you've got, what, another few days left on that, not, not a lot, I don't think?
And the latest, it'll be the 25th, it could be as early as later this week. I don't, I don't know the exact start of the 20 days, but worst case, it's the 25th.
It was the 7th, 6th or 7th, so, okay.
Okay, everybody's understanding, the way that would work is that after the office has received that letter from the town clerk, they will notify us all and ask that we please come into the office to endorse those documents.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so that's the motion by Mr. Gardner to authorize those signatures, is there a second to the motion? I'm not hearing it, Mr. Lawler seconded the motion, okay. Motion is made and seconded, is there further discussion on the motion?
No.
There being none, all those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. And a unanimous vote of all regular members present in voting. Thank you, Sura. Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, so that's, that's the agenda for tonight, I think so.
Agenda for tonight?
What I would like to do for, for next month's agenda, I would like to reserve a 30-minute time slot to present to the board the, the final version of the MBTA's, or the proposed MBTA zoning bylaw. I can say at this point, it's gonna include two maps, it's gonna include a map from the, what we're gonna call MBTA North, which is gonna be that area between Winter Street and Route 18 and the Whitman Town Line, and, and that's gonna be roughly 100 and somewhat acres, and also in the area we're gonna call MBTA Downtown, which is gonna include all of the Brownfield site, as well as some additional land... all of the Brownfield site, as well as some additional land along Spring Street.
Which is the Brownfield site, the eastern?
Eastern State Steel, Precise Engineering, were the two sites that were there.
Right across from the post office.
Yes, right across from the post office.
Yeah.
That's a, that's currently a-
This is just for cleanup?
No, this is more than cleanup. We will be-
So it would be, it would be-
We're just rezoning it. We're not cleaning it. We're rezoning it.
This is just to re, to vote to rezone to- From what to what? It would be part, become part of the MBTA, it would, the overlay for the MBTA communities zoning. I mean, twenty-five years ago, Boston Magazine said they would, that was dirty.
It is.
What's changed?
Nothing.
It would have to be cleaned up afterwards to make it allow.
Under federal and state law, anyone that's using a Brownfield site is required to clean it up prior to approvals for use.
So at the last meeting, there was discussion about proposed reuse.
Right.
The town wants to apply for certain grants to allow for cleanup.
Okay.
In order to do that, or to better the prospects of our obtaining that money,
Yeah.
the, the, it would be helpful to have a, a path forward. What does the town want to do with this? So there was a lot of discussion. Some of these folks, I know, were here last time.
Okay.
And what's being proposed now would be that, you know, I believe Mr. Gardner is going to propose at the next meeting that that area be, become part of the MBTA communities zoning overlay district, which would be the same use and, you know, density and all of that that's up in the, the north side, up by Winter Street and the Whitman Town Line.
So what are the options? Did we propose anything?
No.
In order to get it cleaned up, no?
No, that's not part of our, I mean, that's what, you know, the select board would be doing. And Charlie is applying for various grants.
To clean it?
Yeah, and this would be simply giving some direction as to what the planning board thinks the, the use should be going forward.
And my understanding is that it can't be cleaned up unless we have a plan for it. It would not-
Probably not, can't be cleaned up. The chances of receiving funding to do that is incrementally better.
Do we have options to present as to what we'd like to see happen to it, or we're just handing it to the T?
No, it's not the T. It's not the T.
State of mass?
No, it's not. All right, so the, so the MBTA zoning bylaws is, is a requirement passed by the state for us to change the zoning there. It doesn't change ownership of the property.
Okay.
It simply changes what can be built there.
Okay.
All that it does is change what can be built there by a private developer. It does, it does not change the ownership. The MBTA has nothing to do with it.
So if it gets MBTA zoned, whatever you call it, does that mean that only certain things can be done with it?
Basically, the, the idea of the MBTA zone would be that it allows for sort of denser residential development. Housing, yeah.
Because there were some other ideas brought up, too, and-
Nobody listened.
We didn't know if we can vote on that.
Basically, what would happen would be that, assuming that at the next meeting, that is the proposal, that those, both the north and the downtown areas be rezoned into that district, okay? Then that has to be approved by town meeting. It's only a recommendation.
Is it a done deal for housing?
It, pardon?
Is it, how old sites, well, is-
If it's, if it's approved, if ultimately it is approved as, as an MBTA communities overlay district, then that would be basically for housing, yes.
Without any vote or input from the community?
No, incorrect. I just said.
Why would we ask last week what we want done with it? Do we still? We have an option to give you some.
And I, there weren't really many, there weren't a lot of responses to that.
Well, there were.
No, there were. I was here.
You didn't listen.
Housing for veterans.
Perfect.
I mean, they deserve it.
Teen center, sounds good.
Yeah, I heard teen center.
I wasn't here last week, but there's much more options than-
Single home.
All those ideas came up.
If I may, say that the first step has to be, according to the MBTA zoning law, that we have to first approve that these two areas for the purpose of, of housing, okay?
You pretty much just said it's a done deal.
Right.
No, nobody said that. I, again, I, I repeat myself, okay? In order for anything to happen there, there must be a town meeting vote, okay? The planning board will simply recommend something, okay? A town meeting is where it's decided.
And do you guys have recommendations? What are you guys going to recommend?
That will be at the next meeting, thirty-minute, well, thirty-minute or whatever type of discussion. And then a vote would be made as to whether it will or won't, or both district, both areas would or won't be.
The next meeting you guys will-
Next meeting would be the one where presumably there would be some determination made by the board one way or another. Sir, in the back.
So how is it zoned out? Is it residentially zoned?
Or is that, is that industrial?
We had a meeting and voted on this at the town meeting, and it wasn't, it was voted not to change it. I was there. You were there.
And that would have been when?
That would have been last year.
I don't think so. That's incorrect.
It's the paperwork right here. Because we were all above this and none of my neighbors knew about, and we were all there for that meeting. It was the Article thirty-six. They wanted to change the zoning in order to be able to make that part of the MBT overlay. It's right here written. This is from the town this week.
I, I would respectfully disagree with your characterization that it was being made part of the MBTA communities district because that was not finalized at that time.
It's by the planning board, it says.
To rezone.
The town will accept.
Yep. What? Read on.
To change, will amend the current town of East Bridgewater zoning map by changing certain portions to the existing zoning districts from industrial, residential, and business to residence, so you can build apartments there.
Nope.
Thereby expanding the residence. The subject area is bounded by Central Street on the northwest, Union on the north, and the former railroad right away.
Right. So-
The voters voted no not to change it.
Okay, so that is not the same thing.
That's not the same thing.
It's the same, it- Ma'am, so, so there's a, there's a difference between rezoning the property to residential use, strictly residential, which is what I believe that did, or would have done.
Would have done.
Okay, right, versus the proposed MBTA communities overlay. It's just different in terms of the, what can be built there in the way of residential. If you rezone it to residential, basically, you're talking about single-family homes on X number of square foot lots. MBTA communities district would be different than that. As I think has been publicized, MBTA communities is, is something that affects every town in the, city and town in the state. And certain amounts of property have to be rezoned under the way that things are right now, right? Okay, may?
It's being forced. It's not, we don't, we don't want it.
That may be so.
Somebody passed a law, we don't even have a T station. People have to walk to the T.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're, we're a, we're a, what is it, Roy, a neighboring community, a neighboring community, right?
Ed Agosis, see what he thinks about us.
Well, I think there's a plan in place already, and we're just being strung along. I hate to say it, but he asked us two weeks ago.
So you're, you, right, so, so you're talking, you're talking about certain components, okay? You've got a piece of property, Roy, how many acres is, what's, that one over there is?
The downtown one is going to be somewhere around twenty to thirty acres, depending on the final line.
So, twenty to thirty acres, okay? So clearly, that's more than enough room to accommodate a teen center, okay? What, what we're talking about is, and I think I said, residential over commercial, some open space, you know, things of that nature. I mean, and, and, you know, I think those were the things that, you know, we're looking for, not, you know, necessarily exact, precise uses, in, in the sense of a teen center or, or, you know, whatever. I mean, personally, I think that, you know, something in the way of some housing with some open space and a connection to the downtown, I think was what we talked about last time. I think that makes sense for the town. You're shaking your head no, you don't like that idea.
I'm just listening.
No, you can-
I'll be here next week.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, and you're certainly more than welcome to express your opinions, I mean. But as I say, no matter what the planning board recommends, it is only that. It's a recommendation, right? So it's up to the town meeting to decide, as was done last year, right? Town meeting will decide yea or nay. If the planning board says yes, we would like to recommend to the town meeting that it be rezoned to the, to the MBTA communities district, then it's up to the town meeting to say yes or no, right?
So there's a lot of options on the table, right?
There are, and I believe so this-
Let me, we're getting lost, we're getting lost here, so, we're getting lost here, so let's stop for a minute, please. The, the MBTA zoning we're proposing is an overlay district, number one. It does not change the underlying zoning of either site. The underlying zoning is still, stays the same. If someone wants to come in and build something using the overlay district, then they have to meet all of the requirements under state law and our federal law, in the case of the Brownfields, before they're going to be allowed to build there. One of the reasons this site is chosen is that the town has for at least two decades, probably closer to three decades, been attempting to get that site cleaned up. We are not going to get grants from the state government or the federal government to clean that up without some clear proposals of what the potential long-term use of the property is. It's clear, it's clear under current state law that we have to rezone at least one site, and they want a second site to be in the downtowns of the towns to meet the requirement of the MBTA zoning district.
What we want, a couple of weeks ago, what we all might recommend for it, I think it was just to pacify.
Well, I'm sorry that you think that. I mean, I, I-
We have a plan.
I, I mean, this is, this is an option, right? This is an option. You know, certainly, if that option is, is voted, then you can advocate one way or another when it comes time to be approved by town meeting. That's up to you. But again, what I think is, would be a responsible position to take here is to say, yes, this is the way we want to go forward, right? Because, as Roy says, I think it's important that the site be cleaned up. I hope we would agree with that. But, and not just left as a chain link fence with, you know, a lot of overgrowth and who knows what else.
It could be easily bleaching into our-
I spoke with EPA twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, well, I-
We don't even know if it can be cleaned up.
There you go. So it may be that it's prohibitively expensive. Maybe nobody ever-
Why pick that area? Doesn't East Bridgewater on the land off of Route eighteen?
I, I think the question was just answered, that, that this is a way, the town has been trying for many moons, to try to get it cleaned up. There is now the potential opportunity to get some grant money to do that. And the way forward, as was expressed by Mr. Seelig at the last meeting, is that-
EPA told me it could be a parking lot, and that's it.
Well, who knows? I don't think, you know, I don't think any of us know that, right? Sir.
No, but the congestion down-
Just identify, please.
My name is Paul Murphy, six seven nine West Union Street. I'm just curious, what, say like if you guys propose affordable housing or whatever, and it gets- Voted down, what's like a backup? Do you have like, okay, like they said, something for the kids?
We're not proposing affordable housing.
No, I'm just saying, it's like when you bring it to the town meeting, you, you said you have to have a plan on what you want to do with that property. So I'm just saying, do you have like a plan B if plan A gets denied from the town?
If it's denied, it's denied.
So there's no plan B?
So that, that-
Do anything with the site? That's all I'm asking. Is there anything, is there a plan B for the site?
I mean, that may come out at our next meeting, but, you know.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, as I'm sitting here, I mean, it, it sounds like the proposal will be that it be incorporated into the MBTA communities overlay, and if somebody chooses to come in and purchase that property and develop it, number one, they have to clean it up, and number two, they would work then within the restrictions of that bylaw in order to develop it as whatever. You know, it would be residential something, but exactly what? Who knows? You know?
It would be dependent on the person that purchased it.
Sure.
Well, I think that, that's another thing that, that's being misunderstood here. The town directly is not proposed to build anything. This allows private developers, private money, to, to develop the land based on what the zoning bylaws says. It would also allow the town to purchase the property if they wanted to and, and do something with the property. And it's an overlay district, so all of the underlying zoning is still there. They could, they, the town could purchase the land and, and, and do whatever they want with it that meets the, the then-current zoning.
So this may not be a popular statement, but if you get it cleaned up, and it kind of sounds like to all the townspeople that you want to put housing there, that's kind of what it sounds like your plan is. Because no one's elaborating on any of the ideas that you gave, and you said it's kind of going to be a lot for that. Does this fit into the governor's, where she's allowing builders to take pieces of land and build migrant housing? Is that going to set us up for that, or, I'm just curious, because nobody ever asks those questions.
I don't know what that question was.
Well, she's giving builders land so that they can build affordable housing for migrants. It's been in the news many times.
I, I-
Is, is that-
I mean, I, again, I, this, this would be, this is, this is property that's in private ownership. So, you know, it's, it's, it would be, as I just said, I mean, and I think we're saying here, is it, it would be up to a developer to come in to purchase the property, and at that point, to really formulate a plan as to what specifically the use would be. Now, for example, the plan, a developer has come forward, the owner of the property on the north side has come forward and is coming before the zoning board in, in July with a plan to develop that property between Winter Street, Route eighteen, and the town line. So that's somebody who is already, you know, he's-
Into an apartment?
Partially, I believe, and, and townhouses. That's the proposal, so.
I'm just wondering what's going to happen to our little town of East Bridgewater.
Well, you know-
And I don't think anybody likes to bring up that topic, but it's obvious. There's a lot of towns, some towns, that are fighting it because they don't want to change the landscape of their town.
Sure.
And they're going to be punished by the governor and not get-
Well, who knows? I mean, there's, there's obviously litigation, there's, there's litigation out there that you're probably aware of.
I am.
By, by the town of Milton, among others, that may change the whole landscape. Who knows? But at this point-
We'd be forced to change our zoning laws and everything, too. They don't matter.
That's-
If he comes in and wants us to do something in our town, which he feels-
Well, I'm, we're talking about apples and oranges. I'm talking specifically about the MBTA communities zoning act, okay? That's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about what, what you're referring to, because I'm not familiar with it.
Or what might happen down the road. That's, maybe he took it somewhere else, and I don't know, or misunderstood me. I don't know if we're going to be forced to comply with all of that, like every other town. If we have a choice.
Yeah, we will have a choice.
This is very confusing for everybody.
It's not funny.
I'm confused by it.
I, I don't understand, I don't understand why we keep, I don't understand why we keep saying we won't have a choice. We absolutely have a choice to go to town meeting and to vote.
If we hear what's going on, yes. A lot of times, you can't hear. In this little room, it's a little easier.
We're going to have at least one public hearing at the high school auditorium, one public session, maybe two, so everybody can see-
We can't hear you again. Nobody, I've been told that the microphones are for people at home watching TV.
That's true.
They're not for here. They're not for the auditorium. People don't hear half the conversation. That's part of the problem.
Well, I'm, I'm getting, I'm getting very tired sitting up here and have been working for over a year to help put this together with O'Callaghan Planning Council. And we repeatedly hear the question that, are we going to have a choice? And we repeat with the same answer, we're going to have a public session, we're going to have a town meeting vote. That's how we vote, and that's how we choose in a democracy of which, which we are.
People have to be able to hear the conversation.
So, okay, granted, so, you know, again, we're in a situation where, as last year, you know, if sufficient numbers vote against this proposal, it won't go forward, right? And presumably, the land will stay as it is for another thirty years, and we'll look at fence and brown buildings and, you know, whatever else.
I'm saying, a lot of people stay home because they can't hear the conversation.
The traffic is so bad.
You can't ask questions or vote if you're sitting at home watching your TV at the meetings. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Trying to push my point about people being able to hear at the meetings.
Okay. Okay.
They like to be informed of what you're voting on. I don't have any more to say about it. Wanted to get my point across.
Point taken. As I said last time, I usually don't have problems being a big mouth, so I will try to keep my mouth...
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. I will try to keep my voice higher and make sure everybody, yeah, sitting out there and you don't hear anything, let me know.
Let me say something, this is a bit confusing.
It's common decency for the people in it.
Let me know, I don't, you know, I'm not sitting back there, so I can't tell, you know?
Ma'am, can I get a word in? I just wanna say, these guys are pro-East Bridgewater. There's nothing nefarious going on, there's no ulterior motive, there's no grand plan that I know of.
I didn't say that, I was asking questions.
And, oh, I agree, you have to ask, you have to ask, and you're doing the right thing, you're all doing the right thing, and you all care because you're here. And we'll find out the answers, but, I mean, it's confusing to me, too. So, I should give you my phone number if you wanna call me and ask me some questions, and I'll find out for you.
But...
These are good people, they're up here for the goose.
Everybody in town should be able to go to the meetings and hear what's going on.
I'm sorry? No, but they're here to, they're here to help.
I know that, but you know what the problem is? It's our governor, it's everybody above, they're trying to push this stuff on these towns.
I totally agree with it, we live in Massachusetts, I mean, what are you gonna do?
We're a small town, so it's not like we can fight back. I mean, we tend to a certain point, but it has nothing to do with anybody here.
No.
I mean, it's, it's gotta do with our government.
There's no personal attack.
It's tough, it's a tough state, it's a one-party state at the moment.
People can't get a hotel room.
I know.
They got a nine-year contract down in Taunton.
And the people...
The police are there all the time.
The mayors were never notified. I know Shawna O'Connell, she's not notified.
We're running a little bit far afield on that, so let's, let's say that this will be on the next agenda, which is July fifteenth, yeah, July fifteenth, somewhere, we'll put that on the agenda at seven fifteen.
You got one question out there.
I don't think there's anything, oh, sorry, yes.
They were actually good answers, so the zoning, what is the zoning right now? And we're trying to change it to what?
First of all, again, we're not changing it.
We're voting on changing the zoning.
We're not, we're not changing it. We're putting in what's referred to as an overlay district. The underlying zoning does not change, it stays the same. An overlay district means that if someone wants to use the land for that specific use defined in the overlay district, then they can. It doesn't make any of the buildings, the houses, the businesses, if there's businesses, it doesn't make any of them non-conforming, because the existing zoning does not change.
So my question is, this overlay, is there stipulations of what it can be used for, and, because it sounds like we're trying to...
Yes.
...desify the community.
Yes.
Okay, where do I find that?
It can be used, it can be used, well, we're finished, trying to finish that right now, but I can tell you in general, this, this one, the downtown one, will allow mixed use, which would allow some businesses on the first floor of buildings, residential uses in the second and third floors of buildings.
That's a valid proposal.
It would allow, it would allow single-family, duplexes, quads, eight-unit buildings, and it will allow, based on the requirement in the MBTA state law, up to fifteen units per acre. That's what's gonna be in the, in the proposed zoning.
So how is that, that's the overlay, and right now you can't have eight stories?
Not eight stories, eight units, not eight.
Okay, so one floor, two floors.
So, so think of the, you know, Riverbend Golf Course?
Yeah.
Those, those...
Those units.
Right there, something like that is kind of what the max would be, right?
So as of right now, the zoning that's there now, you can't go that high, can you?
Correct.
No.
So that's what we're trying to do, is allow...
A denser, a denser development, right.
So, affirmably fair housing is the law that we're going under.
Again?
Affirmably fair, furthering fair housing, and that's what this is all falling under, I believe.
I mean, providing for housing, for housing, you know, yeah, I mean, in communities, I mean, that's the whole...
So why is the MBTA name tied to it? Would it just be just a rezoning for, I think that might be part of the confusion.
So let me try and explain how this all came about.
I'm sorry to be late.
This all came about, this all came about starting roughly four years ago, when Governor Baker at the time proposed that, because the towns that are serviced by the MBTA need to provide more multifamily housing in proximity to the various stations that are being served.
Yep.
Because, as he correctly stated, outside of the cities, outside of the core cities around Boston, everybody that uses the MBTA station drives there. So the intent was to try and get multifamily housing in locations in some proximity to those stations. Now, as we all know, we don't have a station in East Bridgewater. We have one on every single border, in every single town around us, there's at least one. Brockton, there's two. So we're called an adjacent community, i.e., we're next to one. Adjacent communities' requirements under the zoning bylaw, which is actually entitled in state law, the MBTA zoning bylaw, is that we have to provide for up to a ten percent increase in the number of units, residential units within our community. So right now, we have right around fifty-one hundred, it might be fifty-one hundred and fifty, plus or minus a few right now, housing units in the town of East Bridgewater. The ten percent number meant that we need to rezone an area, and preferably two areas, which would allow up to five hundred, plus or minus, housing units to be built, ten percent of our current residential housing count. Now, now the intent of the north district is, we've been negotiating with the city of Brockton for some years, and now have a standing agreement with them to share wastewater capacity with the city of Brockton's wastewater plant. The intent would be, that would get, that would cover the area at the Highland Street in that north side beyond Highland Street. The downtown one would be covered potentially by the town's treatment plant that currently services most of the town buildings, the high school, the fire department, and currently has connections to CVS and the Carriage Crossing, and to Hearst Lumber Property. The intent would be that whatever goes here would in almost certainty be connected to that system as well.
So one of my questions is, when you densify the area, that's gonna, that's gonna increase the need for police department, fire department, school teachers, more traffic, I just don't see, give me three reasons the benefit of doing this by densifying East Bridgewater. By doing this, we're gonna bring more traffic, more potential crime, a whole host of other issues. Like I said, fire department will need more firefighters. We're gonna, is it gonna do anything to our taxes? Are our taxes gonna go up? I mean, there's a whole host of things that I'm not really hearing here, we're just, it sounds pretty generic, and we're just changing zoning, but that opens up a whole other can of worms.
Well, we've researched all those other things. Number one, it would not impact the schools.
How do you figure that? If we densify the area, you're gonna have more families, you're gonna have...
Twenty years, twenty years ago, we had twenty-six hundred students in our school system.
So you know how many you're gonna be moving in?
Today, we have less than two, today, we have less than two thousand.
Do you know how many are gonna be moving in there with children, or how many children we don't know?
They do, actually, the master plan does have an estimate, they have the data, and that...
An estimate, yeah.
So who comes up with those numbers?
Well, I think they have, I don't know how they do that, but they...
Those numbers are documented historically by the State Department of Education, and they cover all three hundred and fifty communities in the state. So there's no question that historically, those numbers trend. We know where that trend goes. A ten percent increase in the population in town doesn't materially impact the fire department and police department that much.
It starts out at ten percent.
Correct, exactly.
That's where it gets capped.
Well, once they get their clause in, they ain't letting go, that's it.
The zoning bylaw is gonna be capped at ten percent. Once we, once we meet the intent of the zoning bylaw and have met our requirement under the MBTA zoning, the overlay zoning district gets put on hold. It works just like our current over fifty-five housing, which is also an overlay. Over fifty-five housing gets capped at fifteen percent of the number of housing units in town. When we reach that, the overlay district is suspended until such time as the housing count goes up high enough to require more housing. That worked, and that worked perfectly. We got four hundred and thirty, or four hundred and forty, over fifty-five housing units developed.
Yeah, that's one, that's one development, now we're asking for two more, and then there'll be, down the road, there'll be another one, and next you know, we're a city.
Correct, like we...
That's, that's, we'll end up being tied to Brockton, or we'll be tied to, because we're not able to afford these things, and the state's gonna be pretty much be in control.
Well, I mean, you know, you guys, you guys can assume what you can assume, you know, and, and, I mean, it's, it's a question, it's a question of, you know, I certainly can't see that far into the future, I mean, because clearly, you're talking with this site, let's just keep, confine it to this site at the moment, you're talking obviously an extended period of time to get this cleaned up, which would be step number one. Who knows whether that takes two years, five years, ten years, whatever it might be, it ain't happening overnight.
Yeah.
You know, so there's that. And then, you know, do you find someone who is interested to come in and develop it? Who wants to use that bylaw, or who, you know, do they wanna simply develop single-family homes there? Do they wanna put up other industry, you know, who knows?
Once you open up the, you change the zoning, then the state...
Again, we're not changing the zoning, all we're...
Overlays, it's...
Right, right. All it is doing is it's giving someone an opportunity to come in and take advantage of that specific zoning use, or, you know, however you wanna say it. It's, it's not otherwise saying, yes, you can come in and put up, you know, hundreds of multifamily buildings, or, you know, whatever, it's, it's, so, you know, again, it's, I think it's a question of what's the long-term future for that property, and, you know, it's a question, I'm sure that there are people who say, hey, we'd like it to just stay the way it is for now and forever, you know, and is that in the best interests of East Bridgewater? That's what sort of we have to decide and recommend, and town meeting ultimately will decide. You know, I get the fact, you know, I'm, by trade, I'm an attorney, I've worked representing folks who would try to develop places like that, and I've heard neighbors such as yourselves, gee, we like to see the wildlife in the morning, gee, we like to see this, we like to see that, we all know, you know, it's, it works two ways. I mean, what's in the best interest of the town? Is it to see the wildlife, or is it to increase your tax base and do other things, you know, and so forth? Matter of opinion.
It'd be nice to see a list of the positives, what the, what the reasons why we've been changing this on.
Ah...
Well, maybe one of the positives, it would provide some location for a starter home for our children that don't have any way to go right now?
So there'd be smaller, like twelve-hundred square foot homes, not eight-hundred thousand dollar homes.
That's part of the intent, absolutely.
And if you have a meeting, but that would be more beneficial than apartments and all that.
So would that...
But that's the town meeting.
This would allow that, this would allow that, this would allow single-family houses on small lots.
It's not, we're not saying, we're not, the way this bylaw is crafted is not saying that you have to build, you know, eight, eight-unit buildings, you can, it's, it gives you a variety of choices as a developer, but at all it...
That option of the changes only...
That's, that's true, if that's, well, so, so, so that we'll, we'll put that on the agenda for seven fifteen, the next meeting, which will be the fifteenth of July, we expect to see you guys here, and we'll talk further, and, there you go.
Girl, not a guy.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made, seconded to adjourn, further discussion, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.